Hello, everybody. Well, thank you. Hello. I don't think I've ever walked into a town hall meeting to applause. This is a first, and I'm actually very nervous by the number of vehicles and now the number of people in the room. People often ask me after a town hall meeting, "Well, how many people showed up?" And I'm happy when it's two or three. It's just easier. Usually if there's a crowd, people are mad. You're right. All right, I'm glad to be here, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I think this is town hall meeting number 71 or 2. We're trying to do all 105, and this perhaps is a good time to be in Stafford County. And I was gonna, I reminded as I came in the door, when we were here either last year or the year before, in my usual fashion, I left my truck keys in the wheel well on the back tire, and I come out and they were gone. Parked in front of the building next door, and I couldn't figure out how to get in my truck, and I came back here and I looked for them here, and I looked in the men's room. I got down underneath my truck, looking for those keys, and your police officer came out of the police station, handed me my keys, and says, "Don't ever leave your keys on your tire." So I guess I was well protected in St. John. I've started every town hall meeting, and I take this conversation, obviously, wherever you'd like for it to go and whatever you'd like to talk about, but I've started every town hall meeting this year with at least a brief conversation about veterans, and I want to do that. When I was your congressman, not your senator, I represented a congressional district larger than the state of Illinois. There is no VA hospital here, and our veterans were, if they were accessing healthcare through the VA, they were having to drive to Denver, or to Amarillo, or to Wichita, or Topeka. And we worked to try to get services closer to home. One of the things that happened in this area headquartered out of Pratt was a program called Arch. It was a pilot program to bring services to where veterans live, and they could use care in the community, see a hometown doctor. It was a pilot program. I introduced that legislation in the House. It was generally pretty popular here. I thought it was supposed to be a wide-ranging program. The VA narrowed it to just a pilot program. We were then successful in opening up outpatient clinics in other places, Hutchinson, Dodge City, to get veterans to get routine services closer to home. And my view is that the VA didn't really like that program. They didn't want to lose a single patient to someplace else. And we tried one more time with what we call CHOICE, using some of the stuff we learned in Arch, and it said, "If you live more than 40 miles from VA facility, you can access care in your hometown hospital and see your hometown doctor." And again, the VA implemented that in a way, in my view, that suggested they didn't want to lose a patient. They wanted to make it as difficult as possible for that to happen. And my example of that is, my hometown is Plainville, north of Hayes, and Larry, a Vietnam veteran, called me one day to say, "Jerry, listen to this story." So his story was that he'd called the VA in Wichita. He had told them that he, I conveyed this story to suggest that he said he wanted a colonoscopy, and no one in my audience ever believes me that anybody has ever said, "I want a colonoscopy." So he must have said, "I need a colonoscopy," talking to the VA. "I'd like to have it done here at home. It'd be silly for me to drive three hours, three and a half hours to Wichita to have a colonoscopy." And the answer was, "Sir, you don't qualify for community care. You live within 40 miles of a VA facility. There's an outpatient clinic in Hayes." Larry, having done his homework, said, "But, sir, that shouldn't be a problem. I've already called the VA clinic in Hayes. They don't perform colonoscopies." To which the VA said, "Sir, you live within 40 miles of a VA facility. You don't qualify." So it was that kind of stuff that veterans have put up with. So I raised this topic because veterans in this room and people that you know who are veterans may have tried using this program at home and may be dissatisfied with it. We've now changed the law. President Trump signed into law, and it became effective June the 6th, so about four months ago, something that really changes the name from CHOICE to MISSION ACT. But what it says is, "We no longer have that 40-mile rule. Distance may be an issue, but what it says is, 'Any veteran, if it is in their best interest, may have care at the place of their choice.'" Not necessarily hometown. The other example of that would be a veteran, an Air Force veteran in Bonner Springs, suburbs of Kansas City, who calls to tell me, "I have to have a kidney transplant. The VA wants to send me to a hospital on the East Coast. I know what KU's transplant program does. I want to do it here. They want to send me to someplace I know nothing about." And whether or not the quality and the distance and all that is a problem. He can have, he has had his kidney transplant at the KU Transplant Center, 15 miles from your home, but most importantly, where he thought he could get the best care. So it could be that it's in your best interest to go someplace that is the expert in your problem. It could be that it makes no sense to drive three and a half hours for a colonoscopy. The law now says, "If it is in the veteran's best interest, he or she can have that done at a place of their choosing." The good news, we've outlined for the VA very narrow definition of best interest so that they don't play with this, so they don't play with the definition. But most importantly, a veteran decides, along with his or her physician at the VA. Two people make the choice as to what's in the best interest of veteran. Not a hospital administrator at the VA, not a bureaucrat, not somebody in Washington, DC. The mid-level or the doctor at the hospital, the VA hospital, and that veteran decide what's in his or her best interest. And if those two reach the conclusion, it's the best interest to go to KU for a kidney transplant, or it makes more sense for a veteran in Plainville to stay in Plainville to have a kidney trans, I'm sorry, to have a colonoscopy, then that's the answer. I raise this topic because I want this program to work. I want it to work for veterans. We have 250,000 veterans in Kansas. Many of them live in our most rural parts of our state. It is a problem to get to a VA hospital in our cities, and so I want this to work for them. The VA testified when we started down this path. They testified in front of the committee I'm on. Veterans do not want or need this program. I want to make certain they're not proven right, that veterans don't use it. So my request of you is, if you are a veteran, know a veteran, something that this captures you, makes sense to you, if you want my help, if you want our team's help to make sure this works, put us to, give us the instructions, tell us what the story is, and we'll go to bat for any veteran who's interested in having care at home or someplace where they believe they'd get the best care possible. The other aspect of this is, I mean, I'm, as much as I know how to be, I'm about trying to make sure that rural America has a future. Rural Kansas in particular has a future. There's not a hospital in Kansas that's not hanging on by a thread. And anytime that, just like our schools need every student, our hospitals need every patient, and every time we send somebody away and we send the money that comes with their care to somebody else, we're diminishing the future of our own healthcare delivery system for all of us. And so we want to do the things that increase the chances that the hospital in Stafford or the hospital in Pratt, wherever it is, Kenzley, that they get the business that comes with caring for our veterans. My dad was a World War II veteran, never used the VA. But it sure was important to us in Plainville to have a Rooks County Medical Center. And keeping care of my parents in a place that had that quality hospital and a quality set of doctors meant that they could live, and my dad lived to 98, at home. And in the absence of that hometown hospital, my sister and I would have had a conversation with my parents about the necessity of moving someplace. And this is just one more way that, wherever that place would have been, in our case probably Hayes, but wherever that place would have been, it would not have been a place home where the neighbors and the family and the church folks all took care of my mom and dad as they aged. So help us help any veteran. Tyler York is here. Tyler is an Ashland kid, so he is one of us. His county seat, his county is Clark, his county seat is Ashland, 900 people, slightly smaller, hugely smaller than St. John, which is 1,200 people according to my Kansas map that I just looked at. So put Tyler and I to work to help veterans take care of their circumstances. I would guess, based upon my feel about this audience, and I think I feel audiences pretty well, some of you are here to talk about Quavira. And I'll tell you what I know about it, and then you can take the conversation wherever you'd like for it to go in this regard, excuse me, or any other topic. I should ask, is there a football game in town tonight? No. So we have all the Konsa times, darn. So here's my perspective on the National Wildlife Refuge at Quavira and the consequences to junior water rights holders. First of all, maybe this sounds like I'm distancing myself from this issue, but I'm trying to lay it out as I know it, and you can tell me if I'm missing something. This is mostly a state issue. I am intruding in a place in which the issues that will be resolved will be resolved between senior water rights holders and junior water rights holders at a place called the Division of Water Resources within the Kansas Department of Agriculture. I have virtually nothing to do with those entities. The place that we saw an opportunity to try to be of help was the letter that the Division of Water Resources sent, I assume many of you, that said, "When, in January, the US Fish and Wildlife Service makes a call for water, we are going to then reduce," I don't know what they're gonna do, "they're gonna take the steps necessary to force conservation, to reduce the amount of water that the junior rights holders can utilize." I don't have, again, don't have much of anything to do with that decision, but the question then became, reading that letter, is, "Do I have anything that I can do about whether or not the US Fish and Wildlife Service, Quavira, is going to ask for a call on water?" And so what we have been able to determine is, and I'm pleased to know today, certainly before I'm in front of you, that what my understanding of a conversation I had in Washington, DC last week, has been confirmed in writing by the US Fish and Wildlife Service as I saw the letter that went to Mr. Barfield at the Division of Water Resources, which outlines what I was told and what we conveyed in our press release before you had the Division of Water Resources here earlier in the week. And that is, that the US Fish and Wildlife Service will not make a call on water from Quavira. That then apparently, then the question became, "What does that mean to the Division of Water Resources?" Who then confirmed that in the absence of the call, they would not pursue the junior rights water holders. And what the commitment to me was, that we won't make that call if there is an opportunity for a conversation to take place, but ultimately, a resolution of this issue about junior water rights holders and how, what they're going to do to conserve water. And the commitment was, we will work to get a voluntary agreement as compared to something forced upon them. And the commitment that we got in writing today is that this hold on a request for water and these conversations or negotiations, whatever the right word is, that that commitment to not ask for the call on water will last until the end of the fiscal year 2020, which would be September the 30th of next year. So about a year from now, a little less than a year from now. My pitch to the US Fish and Wildlife Service was, there are things I think that can be done. Augmentation was one of the things we talked about, bringing water in from someplace else to meet the needs. That apparently has not been met, this is my impression, I don't know this, somebody can correct me, but it seems to me that's not been something that was favorably looked on before, but was indicated to me that's something we'd certainly consider. I offered, and again, I don't have the ability to appropriate dollars all by myself in Washington, DC, but I'm a member of the Appropriations Committee. I offered to the US Fish and Wildlife Service to work to try to get them whatever resources they need at Quavira to better manage and utilize the water they have to be more efficient. And then the question becomes, what else is possible for keeping water in the reservoir? The other thing, the pitch we made was that we've had more rain in places in Kansas than we've had in a really long time. I stopped and took a photo of Cheyenne Bottoms not too long ago, and nobody knew. I said, "Guess where I am?" And it's this place filled with water, and nobody had any idea that I was at Cheyenne Bottoms if you looked at the photo. Just unaccustomed to that. So we are, Tyler or James, am I missing anything? The admonition or the, that's not a very good word. Sounds like I've been, doesn't sound like I'm a Kansan if you use the word admonition. The warning that I would suggest is, this is not, you guys are not scot-free. There's nothing that's like a victory here. It's a chance for a better circumstance than where we were going. So I'm not trying to mislead anybody. There's no statement on my part that this issue is behind you. The issue is still in front of you like it always has been, but maybe between now and September of next year, there's a chance to do something different, and we have a US Fish and Wildlife Service that, at least for the year, is willing to explore those opportunities with you. Ken or somebody know anything different than the way I've described that if I mischaracterize this in any way? So that's what I know about this topic. It was surprising to me. I have never in my time in, is anybody from the US Fish and Wildlife Service here before I say this? I have never found an agency, a government organization as difficult to deal with as this one. And this is, this is a different administration than what we've had before, and we have people in places that are interested in finding solutions that don't involve the government forcing things upon people if they're willing to work to find a solution that's something that's agreeable to both sides. What do I need to know? Yes, ma'am? What I've asked, the question was, what role does the chief engineer play in the negotiations? I don't know exactly the answer to that. What I have asked and what we've suggested to the US Fish and Wildlife Service is, they need to designate somebody. The US Fish and Wildlife Service needs to designate somebody for, again, I don't know, you'll have to help me, like, I don't know who negotiates on behalf of all of you. It's whether it's Water PAC or, I don't know how this works, but my goal is to find somebody at the US Fish and Wildlife Service. This is the point person for the folks in Kansas to deal with. We've suggested it's the lady that I visited with, Aurelia Skipwith, who is the nominee to be the head of the US Fish and Wildlife Service. She's already an undersecretary at the Department of Interior, so she has a position of authority now, but she is assuming that she gets confirmed here in the next few days. I'm now pushing for her confirmation to get her in this place. She has come out of the committee on a straight party line vote, I think. Every Republican voting yes, every Democrat voting no, so I mean, it's kind of normal in my life now. But we want to get her through the Senate and in place so that the person who's telling me what they're willing to do is the person who is most likely to speak for them. But in, if it's not her, then somebody that she wants. But the good news is, today, the document that was sent to Mr. Barfield, and I assume you all have seen, comes from somebody in authority that can confirm what Aurelia had told me. But I don't have an answer to your question. My point is, to sum that up, is, could we get US Fish and Wildlife Service to determine what the, because I assume the negotiations are, what does it take to get the US Fish and Wildlife Service not to make a call on water? And that seems to me, that's somebody from US Fish and Wildlife Service, not somebody from the Division of Water Resources. She is, it's not she, it came from somebody above her. Let's see what I can. So we've been pushing to get this letter, something in writing that confirms what I had in conversation, and the US Fish, this is from my ag staffer in Washington, DC. The Fish and Wildlife Service has begun sending around the statement to stakeholders. This should add more certainty to the situation, and by ruling out requesting water for 2020 layout over a clear timeframe, and it comes from, so I'm sorry for being tardy. Will Meeks, US Fish and Wildlife Service, Interior Regions 5 and 7, Mountain Prairie. So it comes from the folks we deal with, I guess, in Manhattan and Denver. That, James? Comes from the Regional Fish and Wildlife. Which is actually helpful. I mean, that's, I, one of the things I wanted to make sure didn't happen, kind of concerned me, was, perhaps I could get somebody to say something in Washington, DC that then wasn't reflected by the people who are actually working at US Fish and Wildlife Service in Kansas. Yes, yes. Particularly once she's confirmed, she becomes the national director of US Fish and Wildlife Service, of which Region 7, these people would work for her, she would be their boss. In the meantime, the conversations we've been having are with the Department of Interior. I actually have a commitment from the Secretary of the Interior to call me and confirm this story to me as well. Yes, ma'am? One night, huh? Thank you. I appreciate you saying that, thank you. I'm somewhat surprised myself, and and this is not, this is not a new issue to me. I used to be a state senator and represented Edwards County, and Water PAC came in, this is 1988 to 1996, and this issue has been, I've been involved in this issue for a while, yes.
Our concerns are some of our economic impact is gonna affect our, so I'm a small owner of a seed company that has basically a big impact, is gonna make a big impact on me. You know, some of these guys are gonna get cut 47% of their water allocation, so that consequently, my 47% of my employees are gone. You know what I mean? And so are my sales, so that's a big impact to me.
Thank you, thank you for reminding.
I know that this is a big issue for all of us, but it's also, you think we're gonna give the wildlife parks a bunch of money, maybe to help them do more conservation? So why can't we get some of that money to go to the organization?
I don't know whether that's, I mean, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question. It's certain, I mean, that may be part of it. I don't know who's would be, I think that's part of your negotiations, is who's responsible. I don't know enough about augmentation to know where the water comes from and who's responsible for getting it there. I assume this involves all of you. But I would echo your point. I've read some of the articles where people at the meeting on Monday were complaining that the Kansas Division of Water Resources didn't take into account the economic consequences of a significant reduction. Again, I can't solve that problem because that's state law. I've been the law, I mean, Kansas is a first in time, first in right state, and that's the issue that determines whose water it is. Again, I'm talking as if I know something. I know a little. That's the way I understand it. Your lawyers can tell you what the reality is, but there is no question, but what, a reason I'm interested in this is certainly to try to keep people farming. And I mean, I would, I don't know what years it was, but it seemed like the, I described what we had was a seven-year drought a number of years ago. I can remember being in southwest Kansas where farmers were asking me, "Get us some CRP program that gets us out of farming." And I understand when there's no rain, no snowfall, that there is no crop and there is no money. But my thought, my thinking about that is, if we, if the solution to our problems is no farming, then that creates the problem of no community. There are no businesses, there are no, there is no grocery store, there is no farm implement, there is no grain elevator. So the farmers in southwest Kansas are saying, "Get me out of farming. You're killing your community." And so if farmers are forced out, ranchers are forced out of business here, or they are going to produce a lot less crop and yield, what that means is, grocery store, the efforts to have a grocery store in Stafford County, all those things, I think, just become so much more difficult. We only earn a living and our communities only have a future where we come from when farmers are having a profitable year, and we don't have that anyway. I had my town hall meeting in Hoxie, which occurred early in July. Hoxie's the county seat of Sherman, Sheridan, and we were sitting around the table having a conversation. They were kind of bragging about the good things that were happening in their community. It was, Jerry, we got, some people are building a couple of new homes. There's a couple of spec houses being built, man, that's something that never happens in our towns in most instances. We have a new café in town. The hospital got a grant, and they're remodeling. So they were, they were telling me the good things, like you would in any town, what to most people would be a very small kind of thing, is really important to us. And a farmer said, "Jerry, I assume you know this, but let me remind you, all those things are good, but unless farmers and ranchers in our county, in our community, are earning a living, none of that is long-lasting, and it doesn't really change the nature of our future." Only when farmers and ranchers have a chance. For as long as I've been in Washington, DC, I've been telling people, where I come from, economic development is often whether or not there's a grocery store in town. There is no grocery store in town when farmers aren't having a profitable time. And we have our ups and downs, I understand that, but if the long-term is no farming, no profitability, all the things that we're trying to keep together just disappear, including, I understand, I would think, your business. Yes. It's a good thing that you have questions. Okay. Let me make sure I understand what you're telling me. So the court didn't issue any ruling because there wasn't anything to rule on yet? Okay. And that case is still pending? Yes. You know, I'm an elected official. I always wanted to deliver good news, never liked to deliver bad news, but I want to make sure that I'm not mis, I've said this, so I'm repeating myself, which is not unusual for a politician either. So the problem still exists. There still is the issue of what happens and what it means to your business and what it means to the people in this room, in this community, in these communities. And your lawsuit may be still important in how that's resolved, but make every effort to figure out a way to solve this problem without the proverbial to your head. I don't, let me repeat, let me say that, add one more sentence to that. I don't know that I have any ability to do anything more to make this problem go away except to make sure that US Fish and Wildlife Service negotiates in a fair and reasonable manner. But I don't, I don't know of any additional, I don't mean this the way, I don't know, I don't have another rabbit to pull out of this hat. I just don't know what it would be, and I'm surprised this rabbit was in that hat to begin with. Yes? Okay.
.........
What Ken is doing is reminding me there is another role, but this isn't going completely away from me because we will, we will work with NRCS and others at USDA to try to help any kind of farm bill program, any conservation program that might be helpful to try to make sure that it is something that works. Still, it's still at Speaker Pelosi's desk. I mean, while this issue is an immediate one that you face, the longer-term prospects of of agriculture, they rely on trade. I one time had a wheat farmer tell me, "Jerry, forget the rest of the world, let's just take care of ourselves." And I wanted to say, what 48% of acres in Kansas, of wheat acres, do you not want to plant, cultivate, and harvest? Because we produce more in Kansas, and we produce more in the United States than we can consume, and how we make a living is by selling it to somebody who lives far away. And trade matters to us. USMCA, Mexico is the number-one purchaser of ag commodities from Kansas. Canada's the number-one purchaser of ag and manufactured goods from Kansas, and we need... I've been a little, I was a little worried that the President might withdraw from NAFTA, period, and have nothing. We need to get this new agreement, which is better than the old agreement, that the President and his team negotiated, we need to get it approved. The law by which it's considered in Congress requires the House to go first. And so we are, I've had a lot of, particularly ag groups, but people come to my office from across the country saying, "We want you to support USMCA." And my answer is, "I do, but I need..." For example, the Minnesota wheat growers were in the office lobbying me to support USMCA. That's fine, but you need to go get your Democrats in Minnesota to put pressure on Nancy Pelosi to bring this to a vote. My view is that if it was voted on, it would be approved in the House, and I think once the House approves it, the Senate is probably willing to do the same. So it is, and I read a week ago that at least some were saying that negotiations between the Speaker and the White House were moving in the right direction and they were getting closer to a deal. I don't know the truth of that, but at least that's what the reports were. We one time had a, this isn't intended to be partisan, we one time had a governor of Kansas who opposed a utility plant, a power plant being built in Holcomb. And she argued that, "Why would we build a plant to produce electricity when the benefits, the electricity are going to be sold to somebody that's not a Kansan?" It is exactly what we do for a living in Kansas, is every community wants something that they manufacture, they grow, they produce, that's sold to somebody else, and the money comes here. We are the beneficiaries of trade and exports, and Mexico and Canada are important. I'm pleased the White House, the President, the negotiation team apparently has us back in Japan. I remember the days in which we were high-fiving when Japan started re-importing US beef after BSE. It is a huge deal. That is a huge market for us. And livestock industry, we are lots of things in agriculture, but we are clearly a livestock state, and beef to Japan is hugely important to us. I'm anxious to see that take place. China, of course, is the big issue, and my request, conversations with the President and others within the administration is, please, make this move as quickly as possible. The longer we go, the question, the discussion we had in Hoxie about the future of your community and agriculture not earning a living, now, it becomes just even more of a problem. My guess is, it's true in this audience, I mean, I'm among Kansans all the time, almost every conversation I have with a Kansan farmer about China and tariffs is, "Jerry, we're patriots, we support the President, we think this will work out and we'll hang in there." And I appreciate people who are willing to roll up their sleeves and try to make things work in difficult times, that's what we do. But I also know that the longer this goes on, the less likely you have a grocery store, the less likely your business is profitable, the less likely we get a son or daughter to return home to a farm. So it is, it's fine for a farmer to say, "I'm hanging in there," but there's a lot of other people who are dependent upon that farmer making money for our communities to have a future. I worry, the longer this trade battle goes on, I would guess, I hope you could tell me I'm all wrong and that you have lots of sons and daughters returning home to Kansas farms and ranches. I doubt that that's the case, and I doubt that if there was a conversation today, that most farm families would say, "Yeah, we can afford to have another set of mouths to feed out of this income." And so then we lose our kids to Wichita or Latha, and they got a 401K plan and they got a healthcare plan, and suppose things get better a few years from now, are we going to be able to entice them back to Stafford County or to Rooks County, my home? Or are they going to be satisfied because they got the 401K and they got the healthcare plan and they're doing fine? As you know, farming is a difficult, challenging, risky, often unprofitable business, and lots of people just like the certainty of a paycheck. But our futures of our community depend upon people who are still willing to take those risks. And so the longer we're unprofitable, the longer the trade battle goes on and the economic circumstances are difficult, the less likely we have of pulling people home or keeping people home. I don't want to turn, you all have been very kind about, you know, I have, do have some town hall meetings that aren't quite as positive, and, but farmer suicide is up tremendously. And just to highlight the challenges that people are facing, we're working to get more resources to extension and to FSA offices and other places to try to connect with people who are facing difficult times. And again, if you want to make this very serious, and it's not just about whether or not a son or daughter returns home to a farm, it's about the well-being of the farmer, him or herself today. Yes, ma'am?
I've asked different people and no one seems to have an answer for me, but how can they find new soil on our land to make our taxes in some cases more than double?
Or the county commissioners? I have to add myself to one of those people who can't answer your question, but, I mean, this, I know enough about Kansas taxes to know that the effort was made in the 1980s to create a tax, property tax situation for agriculture that was designed to be based upon, in some parts, not just the value of the land, but the income it generates. And I don't know how you're, I mean, my guess is, maybe this is related to the conversation we're having. The shrinking economy means that you have to tax people who are still there more to provide the same level of services. It's a reason that we need more people in our communities is to share the burden. And most of us come from places, most of us in this room at least, come from places in which there's a not lot more people to share the burden of. But fortunately, I was a state senator, I admitted that a while ago, and I left to get out of dealing with property taxes a long time ago. And Washington DC, with the exception of one issue that I can think of, the deductibility of property taxes on your income taxes is the only thing I think that Washington DC has to do with property taxes. And I like it that way. Sir?
Senator Rand, could you help us, and GMD5, I think is probably going to be the lead on this, through the water problems we have?
Okay.
Could you help us get hooked up to the right person, or get GMD5 hooked up to the right person, or do you know if they've already done that?
Does anybody want to talk from GMD5? Hello?
I'm the manager for GMD5.
Good to see you, thank you. Thank you.
To address your concern about what GMD5 is doing to get this ball run forward, we are in conversations through Senator Rand's office in DC to get those meetings scheduled and get that ball run forward. We are being mindful, but at the same time, we're getting our ducks in a row, no pun intended, they are as well, trying to figure out what they need for this resolution from their point of view and who that point of contact would be, we're working on that as well. And so it's going to take a little bit of time, but the district is committed to seeing a resolution that's going to be favorable for not just Povera, but also for the local economy, because we take that very seriously. We are local, we're locally driven, and we're going to see this through.
And I said this a bit earlier, but my wife always tells me I'm a terrible communicator, so I will say it again. We're working to find that point person so that GMD has a person, so it's not just dealing with US Fish and Wildlife Service, whatever that is, it's, this is the person that US Fish and Wildlife Service says they have the authority to have these conversations, these negotiations, these discussions about what to do to keep them from needing to make a call on water a year from now. Pray for rain, too.
Senator Rand?
Sir?
You're telling us we only have 11 months left, basically, to get this done. So we need really to have that to happen pretty quick. So it's going to take a little bit of negotiation to get this called, is correct?
Yeah, absolutely. All that was agreed to was a delay in any request for water, the call, and they agreed to do it till the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30, 2020. And I do think that, I mean, getting the ducks in a row is a, that makes a lot of sense to me, and getting the person or people who can represent the junior water rights, the GMD, with the right person at US Fish and Wildlife Service is the thing that we're working on, started working on a couple of days ago and hoping to have an answer before I got here today, is this is who we want to position ourselves, US Fish and Wildlife Service's position. So it is in the works, and I think we're, my guess is that we're treating this very seriously and moving quickly. All right. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I do appreciate that you talked with Fish and Game and that they have basically gave us a year extension. I hope that GMD5, I know they want to get their ducks in a row. You know, we've been negotiating for 20 years, really haven't got anything done. Now, DWR expanded the rattlesnake basin, so I just got put in it two years ago, but I'm hoping that GMD5 can realize, you know, by this time next year, if we're sitting here with nothing done, then we're probably going to take the water cut. Hopefully, we can get something done before this time next year.
Hard to predict the future, but I, again, in my effort to try to make how clear it is that you all seriously work hard, concede, do whatever it is to find something that's workable, is, you would expect, I guess I would expect, that there would be a call on the water a year from now if there's not progress made in these discussions. I don't know that, maybe we're going to have another wet year, and that wet year is, it all depends on what 160 acres you happen to live on. Yes, ma'am? Hello, Joyce.
I appreciate all these issues that are local, but I have a more general question, or something that you can address as well.
Okay.
What do you believe in our community is the most challenging issue for the United States at this contentious moment?
I had this question at a town hall meeting, if I can add some humor while I think of a good answer. I had this issue raised to me in this way at a town hall meeting just a few weeks ago, and the question was, "Senator, what keeps you awake at night?" And my answer was my age and the necessity of getting up. I don't know exactly how to narrow it down to one thing, but you made a point in the way you asked your question. We do desperately need people coming together. I mean, this, while you say this is a different issue, we need people who want to resolve their differences. There apparently are people who just love to fight, and there are times to have a fight, to have an argument, to have a strong effort at trying to get what you need or want. I don't expect people to give up their ideas, but how we approach the issues, it's certainly different today in Washington DC than it was years ago when I was first elected. And we need people who want to resolve differences and find solutions and not just always continue to have an argument. I want, I don't want to be here a year from now and the argument's still continuing, I want it to be resolved. And there are, there are multiple positions or opinions about what to do here, I assume. Certainly, the US Fish and Wildlife Service probably has something different than the junior rights water holders, but the point is, when there are differences, it takes people who want to resolve the differences, not people who just want this to continue for another 20 years. So it, I wish things were different. I'm troubled by the House of Representatives and impeachment. And it, I'm, I think the world, what keeps me up at night, China, Russia, and our enemies around the globe, terrorists, cyber attacks, the challenges are significant. What I, what they all have in common is, is there a willingness for people to set aside their differences and try to resolve, try to make things better? And I hope the answer to that is yes, and it's the way historically things have worked in this country, and they need to continue to work that way into the future. Did you say you're from Axteal? Oh, Maxville. I was going to say, man, you came a long way to... Axteal's a little town up in Marshall County. Just to prove I know my geography, although I had to think about Sherman and Sheridan County a moment ago. Yes, sir?
Another question. You had mentioned, perhaps, if you get federal money to help with the augmentation. In your job in Washington DC, are you aware of any federal money that's ever been used in a water problem where augmentation was part of the solution?
No, and I think, I mean, what I think I learned in this meeting was what Kent said, which is there now is perhaps a provision in the Farm Bill that would create a program at NRCS that might be of help, this regional approach to conservation. Kent, am I putting words in your mouth? I mean, so that, until I, and it's one reason to have town hall meetings is not just for me to talk, but for me to learn things from Kansans, that's the primary reason we do this, and that's something I didn't know and hadn't heard. And that's, the next step is, so are there provisions within, particularly NRCS, but any FSA program that would be helpful in providing some dollars to help resolve this, to help fund the cost of the fix? We've become well-acquainted, we do a conservation tour, we've actually toured Povera, I don't know, years ago, five, six, seven, eight, 10 years ago, maybe longer, 10, 12, long before this fight started, 10, 12, 15 years ago. Guess that, this fight's been around that long. Can't ever say that. So we had the chief conservationist of NRCS, the head person of conservation programs in Washington DC with us in Kansas earlier this year, looking at conservation programs and what landowners and farmers in particular are doing to preserve the air, land, and particularly water quality. So we know who to talk to, and he's somebody who's familiar with Kansas now. Well, I appreciate the conversation. I'm going to go see if my keys are still on the truck tire. Thank you. And our team, we're talking to you, I know, and I know we've talked to Kent, if there's somebody that we're missing in this equation that local folks make sure that we... With me is, while I introduce Tyler, Tyler York is the one with more hair growth on his face. James Kelly is the guy with more hair growth on his head. James is a rancher farm kid from Elkhart, he does ag work for you. We have a team, two people in Washington DC and one in Kansas, James is the Kansan. And again, feel free to put me and that team to work. And if you'd remember, if there is a veteran, at any one time, we have about 150, what we call cases, in trying to help veterans get what they deserve from the VA. And if any of you or anybody you know can use my help to get what they're entitled to. I'm not a veteran. I graduated from high school at a time the Vietnam War had just come to an end. Vietnam affects the way I look at the world, and one of those effects was seeing how people that I knew that were a couple of years older than me, how they were treated when they came back from Vietnam. And I told myself as a 16-year-old kid, "I'm going to do everything I can to compensate for the way people were treated then." I never, ever expected to be a United States Senator, so in addition to paying respect, I now have an opportunity, a responsibility, to make sure that I use this job to make certain that those who served our country are well-cared-for. Yes, sir?
Senator, well, thank you very much for coming to say this. I want to personally thank you as a veteran for support of veterans and for the community-based outreach clinics that have gone throughout here. I've been a, I've taken their services and it's been a big help to me, and I know it's been a big help to other veterans in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that, thank you for your service. Thank you all very much. All right? Apparently, I'm not going to escape early because this person who does not seem to be shy wants to visit with me. We can, we can, absolutely. Thank you all.